Okay. Please be sure to turn on your microphones prior to speaking to allow the audience and home viewers to be able to hear your questions and discussions. I call this meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission to order at 7:01 PM. I don't remember who is the secretary, but...
Terry is the recording secretary and makes all the courtroom calls and vote calls and things like that.
Okay. Would you be willing to take role of all the members present?
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Ms. Holliday?
Here.
Ms. O'Donnell? Roberts? Shepherd? Durbin?
Here.
Vice?
Here.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda since they're sent out?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay. The minutes from our September 4th, 2024 Regular Historic Preservation Commission meeting are available for approval. Is there a motion to approve? Or any requested edits or changes?
I noted, I noted no errors. Very thorough, very well done, and I would move to approve.
I second that.
All right. So, thank you both for moving and seconding. As we don't have any corrections or amendments, all members in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All members opposed, please say no. All right. The minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is regarding written communications. I could speak to that, or is there someone else who wants to speak to that?
All depends on what you're going to announce.
I was going to mention the written communications that we received.
From Brian? Okay, yes. Yeah. Other than that, we had no written communications.
Correct. Okay. So, I wanted to mention that Bryan Adams from Champaign reached out and said that he was, he was able to review our meeting on September 4th, 2024, and learned that we had interest in potentially updating our Joseph Royer brochure that was created a number of years ago, maybe 10 years ago or something like that, which we know we have plenty of in print, but we mentioned that there could be some updates or maybe some corrections made. And so Bryan volunteered and expressed his interest and willingness to help with those updates with, for that brochure. So, I just wanted to bring it up. I don't know if that's something that we have to vote on, or if we can have a discussion now, or if that's something that needs to be added to the agenda, but I would like to find out if other members of our commission are interested in accepting his interest and letting him know that we will be back in touch at a later date regarding that brochure.
So, if I could just add a couple items, really the only, only request he had was that if he participates, he be acknowledged in whatever, you know, deliverables come out, which to me seems a pretty reasonable request. I don't know the details of the original brochure. I'm fairly certain that Dennis Roberts was involved in a bit of it, or all of it. Again, it predates me. Yes, we do have two boxes worth of pamphlets, still brochures, the old ones. Angela's got one there, but a lot can be done with a revised electronic document. It can be put online. A lot of other things can come out of it. And then when we get rid of all those printed brochures, if we want to print off new ones, then we can go about that. The third thing is, I think the project, depending on its scope, could be a good candidate for a CLG grant, and I have some stuff in my staff report about that. So, that's all I'll say here.
Well, Bryan has been a great collaborator in many ways, you know, over the years, and so I think it's terrific that he reached out, and I would encourage us, you know, collectively to, or you on our behalf, to communicate with him our appreciation of his interest in having it be as correct and interesting as possible.
And so, I guess the question is, is this something that we can just pursue as a, as a collective group? Do we need to vote on it? Or can we just move forward with having a conversation with Bryan?
It doesn't appear that there needs to be any need to vote on it. I think moving forward, though, activity would be under Open Meetings Act protocol. So, if more than two, you know, commission members got together, it would have to be a published meeting, which could be done. We could simply post, "We're having a work meeting," and the public's available to come. Nobody might come. People might come and help, or just come to watch the commission do things. But you could also break up into little working groups. One works on brochure, another one works on website, whatever. But, so, no need to vote, but manage it appropriately. And staff is here to assist in whatever level we can.
Yep. That sounds good. Thank you. Okay. Understood about the two-person limit as well. Okay. As far as audience participation, does anyone in the audience want to address the Historic Preservation Commission?
You know where to find us in November.
Well, thank you for attending. As far as continued public hearings, there are no continued public hearings. Old business, there is not any old business besides what we're going to discuss later. New public hearings, there are not any new public hearings. And new business, no other new business has been brought up either. As far as monitoring the historic properties, are there any members that wish to bring up any monitoring of existing historic properties?
No, but I have a question, because it seems like when that's happened in the past, it's been occasional. It's been someone has gone by something and noticed something, and I don't know if there's any systematic assessment going on.
There is no systematic assessment, and I've thought about that when I show up at meetings and people ask questions. And maybe if the commission members might be interested in considering, I could, if folks wanted to, we could divvy up the landmarks that we have, and over the month, if, you know, people were willing to drive by a couple, three of our wonderful landmarks and districts, and you get out and take a look and see if there's anything amiss, and that's kind of your, your work contribution.
I personally would enjoy that.
Okay.
I think that that sounds like a great idea, and it'd be a great excuse to get out and, you know, just check, to check out things and...
Okay. Would you like me to maybe try and make it in a format where you could kind of vote for the ones you wanted to see? If you had a particular predilection for them, or shall I just assign them, maybe group them by area so it's easier for you to hit them? Not that Urbana's Chicago.
Yeah, group by area would be great, yeah.
Okay. All right. Will do.
Because that's, I mean, that was a personal opinion. I don't know how others feel about it, if they would enjoy that or not, but I think it could be really fun just to, you know, report in on your...
Absolutely.
It's like tending a garden.
Stewardship.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't, I don't think we need to vote or anything.
Yeah, no.
As long as if they're, you know, parceled out, that would make it, that would express it, you know.
Sure. And I could even figure out, maybe I'll figure out a way for you to be able to, like, report it on a Google Doc, so you can just go in and say, "Nothing happened," and so we can have a record going moving forward. I'll see if that breaks any IT rules.
Thank you.
Yep. That's, that's great. Thank you so much. All right. We're to the staff report. I know there is a staff report. Marcus, do you, would you, are you ready to provide that?
On the agenda, I am preceded by our colleagues with the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan, who would like to talk to us about the, the status of the comprehensive plan revision. And I'll turn it over to them, and then I'll do my very short and less exciting report after that. And I will leave it to them to introduce themselves.
Yeah. Thank you for having us this evening, and we're excited to present the first draft of the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan. I'm Andrea Rudy. I'm Senior Advisor for Integrated Strategy Development, and one of my charges is to kind of coordinate the plan with my colleague here. I'll let Kevin introduce himself, and I also get involved with economic development here at the city as well.
Okay. Thanks. I'm Kevin Garcia. I'm the principal planner and the zoning administrator, so I head up the city's planning division. So, yeah, we're excited to be here tonight. This is the culmination of a, well, we're, we're in the final stages of what's been to this point about a four-year process to develop a new comprehensive plan, so we're really excited, and we're making the rounds to all the boards and commissions, so thanks for having us.
And you should have received something. I think it was August 20th. We sent a release out with information on how to find the plan online. It went to all the commissions, so I hope that you received that and, and maybe had a chance to look at it online. So, we thought we'd give some background first of kind of where we're at. It's been a multi-year process. The last plan was done in 2005, and it's a 20-year vision for the city. So, we, we're on target, as Kevin said, and hopefully we'll, we're in the final, final stages here as we work through with the Plan Commission at this time. It articulates the overarching goals for the city, and we, in the comprehensive plan in Imagine Urbana, we call those big ideas. And then we have big moves and little moves, which are the strategic actions that are going to help make those goals a reality. And it really serves as the city's primary long-range planning document. Kevin's group, you might just even talk about, Kevin, how you, how you use the comprehensive plan in your day-to-day operations.
Sure. Yeah, and then I'll talk a little bit about how we're, we're hoping this plan would differ from that a bit. So, typically, our, our current plan is used by the planning division and by the Plan Commission to sort of evaluate cases. If somebody wants to, say, rezone a property, or if, if they need some sort of zoning approvals, we, you know, we go to the plan first. We also use it to talk with developers about things they might want to be doing to see if it fits with the comprehensive plan. So, the new plan, we'll, we'll be using it for, for those same things, but also with this plan, we've, we've tried to work with the rest of city staff to make this a more comprehensive, comprehensive plan, so that other city staff can use it and other, you know, we hope it's useful for, you know, outside of just the, the planning silo, as it were.
So, what you have before you, and I'm glad you have a monitor to look at, because it gets, the print gets kind of small in this, especially if you're looking at a screen. But this is the process. We started it back in 2020. Many of you might have remember, we had a website where people could post ideas on an ideal wall. We had a map where you could post or pin different places you liked, or places that needed improvements. There was a survey on it as well. So, that was kind of our first step into just making people aware of the plan and starting to gather information. And we called that Phase One Community Engagement. COVID hit, and we had to modify some of our, our methods. Typically, we would have been out and meeting with people firsthand. We had to do a lot of Zoom meetings. Then we were able to do outdoor events, which, that proved probably more productive, because we were at events that were already existing in the community, and we could get feedback that way. So, we spent a lot of time, we had an SMS survey that was available in four languages. You didn't have to use a smartphone. You could take the survey with any type of telephone. Just a, any, anything that we could think of to be able to reach people. Our goal was to try to give people that don't normally have a voice in government, have an opportunity to reach out and be able to be heard. And so, we used a lot of different methods in order to do that. We then published a report on that, and I'll, there's a slide that talks about the different reports that we published during these last, last few years. And we also, so that, that got published in October of '22, that first round of community engagement. During that process, we were doing other things in parallel. One is we did an assessment of the 2005 plan to see what things worked, how we could improve upon the 2005 plan. And we also worked on what is typically called in other plans, existing conditions or the present conditions, and we called it Examine Urbana. And we released that. It's a online, just a living document that you can go and learn how we got to where, where we are today, why, why things happened, why things look the way they are. Very extensive document. It was done by one of our colleagues, Lily Wilcock, and she was getting her master's in planning and used it as her capstone project. And it's a very insightful and detailed look at Urbana as a whole. So, then we got into Phase Two of Community Engagement, where we had people prioritize their spending. So, the first round gave us what people were interested in, helped us in developing themes, et cetera. But the next one, they had to decide, okay, of all the things that I would like to have done in the city, what can I afford to do? And they received $100 Urbana bucks that they could spend, but they had about $800 worth of projects to spend them on. And so, it was a real-world exercise, just like the council does. We can't do everything that we'd like to do, so how do you prioritize that to what's important? So, we published a report on that as well. And then also in tandem, we were still looking at the information that we got from Phase One and then Phase Two, to start putting that down on paper. What's the city's vision look like? What's the, what are the city's values and how we were going to address those? And so, the last few months have been spent doing that, and now we have a draft that we've released. Everybody should have gotten a postcard also. Hopefully, you got one at your house. But we're, like Kevin said, we're talking to the commissions. We've had community meetings to, people could come and ask us questions, learn more about the plan, and also the maps that are available. And so, we're on schedule, hopefully, to have the plan approved by the end of the year. But everything's tentative, because we're really wanting everybody to make sure they have an opportunity to weigh in, give us feedback, and the Plan Commission is having a study session devoted to every one of their Plan Commissions until they're ready to make that recommendation to council. So, Kevin, you want to add anything to that? That's a long, long, abhorrent process to consolidate down into a couple of minutes.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I'd, I'd just say if you haven't seen the Examine Urbana website, I would, I highly recommend you check it out. I think you can get there by going to examine.urbana.us.
And if you go to the city's website and just search Examine Urbana, it'll, it'll pop right up.
Yeah. But it's full of great knowledge or information, so.
Yeah. Every time you read it, you learn something new. So, these are the reports I talked about. We did the 2005 plan assessment. Doing that early on really helped us in knowing, okay, how we needed to address issues that the public brought up, and how we could measure those and make sure that we, you know, we follow through on what those goals are. The outreach summary, again, that went into great detail on all the data that we gathered. We developed themes out of that. You can see that in the report. So, it really started just congealing all of these different comments that we heard into a useful document to go forward. Kevin already mentioned Examine Urbana, and then the Balancing Act findings. We, we published the findings both from online as well as our interactive game that we did. It was an online exercise that we turned into a, essentially a board game when we went out to community meetings. So, you can see the differences in people's answers based on those that answered online versus played the game at one of our, our meetings, as well as the by-ward comparisons, what, what was prioritized in one ward versus another. So, very, very insightful information. And then now we are where we are today. We released the draft in August, and again, this is our first draft, our preliminary draft, and just, we're trying to get as much feedback as we can on, "We heard you. Did we get it right?" That's, that's really the, in a nutshell, what we're, what we're trying to look at now. So, the table of contents, for those of you that maybe aren't familiar with the document yet, we talk about the vision and values, and again, everything came from our community engagement. This was a document that is, really did come from the ground up, the comments that we heard, and it was distilled into, into this document. We give the background of how we, what was involved in the process, how we got here. We talk about the big ideas, which again are the goals for the community, the big moves and little moves, again, which are the, the objectives and the strategies to, to make those goals a reality. We also have a master map, and Kevin will go into that a little more detail, a future land use map and other maps that are involved in that, how we're going to track our progress. So, we have metrics assigned to each one of those little goals. We also have community metrics as well. The community metrics are more general, like, you know, demographics, et cetera, that we'll just be tracking. The plan won't influence those different metrics for the community, but then the little moves, those are actual hard metrics that are going to track each of those, each of the action items. And then the evaluation and reporting, how we're going to do that. Our intent is to have regular updates to council on the plan and what our progress has been on those different action items, as well as having a full update every five years on the plan. And the appendix, we have a PDF version that, sitting at the back of the room, if anybody wants one, I can also give it to Marcus to send out electronically. But the appendix is mainly those reports that we talked about, so it's a pretty extensive appendix. It's over 300 pages. It also has definitions in it, too. That's, that's early on, and the rest of it are those reports. So, Urbana's vision and values, again, this was distilled from all of the feedback that we have, and it was over, over and over, you heard people talk about what a welcoming community at Urbana is, and that's, that's really our goal for the next 20 years. We want to be a welcoming community for everyone, and it's hard to, hard to not agree with that, but that really was the primary topic or primary statement that we heard over and over. And Urbana's values, the city ensures equity and inclusion in all city services. The reason you see equity underlined is throughout the Imagine Urbana, we have definitions. So, if you don't know what we mean by a word, it's underlined, you can hover over it, and it'll give you the definition. So, that's why you happen to see this one underlined. The city is a welcoming, livable, and healthy community. The city has a thriving, resilient economy and environment. The city celebrates and enriches its cultural vitality. And again, these values are what's going to guide decision-making going forward. So, when the council is making a major decision, they can look back at their values and say, "Okay, yeah, this, this should be guiding our decision, looking at these things. Does it accomplish one of our values?" Kevin, you want to add anything to that? And also promoting growth within the city's borders. This has to do with filling in where we have available space within our community, rather than going outside of our boundaries. Also, going where there's infrastructure in our community, where it already exists, instead of expanding into areas where we don't have the, whether that's infrastructure and roads, or if it's the sewer systems, et cetera. So, growing within the city's borders. And so, this shows you the hierarchy, what the inner relationship is between what those big ideas, the goals, and then the big moves, they all feed into it. There aren't big moves specifically associated with each of the ideas. Sometimes it, the big moves address maybe three of those big ideas, and you'll see that when you go through the document. And then those little bars underneath are the little moves. Some have more, more action items than the others, but all of them are accountable through metrics, and that's what you see across the bottom, that we'll be measuring, or have metrics to measure each one of those, the success and the progress. So, the big ideas, like I said, they're the overreaching goals. It's what we're going to look like 20 years from now. So, we have four big ideas. Urbana is a place for everyone. Urbana is both financially and environmentally resilient. Urbana is a city of connected neighborhoods, and Urbana embraces its cultural vibrancy and character. So, then you get into the big moves, and again, like I said, not eat, they're not, they don't track directly to each one of those, but sometimes embrace two or three of the big ideas. So, developing a plan to address Urbana's diverse housing needs. And when you go into the plan itself, you'll see the little moves that are associated with that, and, and a description really about what we're trying to achieve with each of those big moves. Revising the zoning ordinance to align with Imagine Urbana, and this one is near and dear to Kevin, being from the planning department. I'll just have Kevin just make a few comments about that. We don't want people to think we're going to rezone your neighborhood. That's not the intent here.
No, but one of the main issues that we noticed with our current plan, again, it's from 2005, is that it's, it's actually a really good plan. There are a lot of great ideas in it, but implementation of those ideas was not as good as, as we would like it to be. And a lot of the implementation, we feel, is lacking because we didn't update our zoning ordinance to match what the plan actually says. So, so we've run into that time and again, of having issues with the zoning ordinance really not matching up with our current comprehensive plan. So, we want to be explicit and say, once we finish this plan, we're going to revise our ordinance so that the two actually line up. Because the way that the comprehensive plan works and the way that the zoning ordinance works is, the comprehensive plan is our policy document. It says what we want, and then the zoning ordinance is one of our couple of regulatory documents that says, "Here's how you do those things." So, you know, we have the what we want. Right now, it's good, but the, how we get there, we never really enacted the changes there, so.
And the reason I made the comment about, you know, my neighborhood not being rezoned, those are the things that we're getting questions on from the public when they read it. Okay, what's that mean in my neighborhood? What's that mean to me? And if there's concern, just making sure we address that. So, Kevin's explanation is, is really the whole emphasis behind that, that particular big move. Creating neighborhood plans to address the needs of individual areas. We're quick to point out with the, the comprehensive plan, just like the plan in 2005, that it's a plan for the entire city. So, we're not focused on the individual, specific areas within the community with the comprehensive plan. It's really goals for the entire community. So, this is a separate big move about maybe having neighborhood plans or small area plans as just something that happens after we approve the comp plan. Strengthening downtown Urbana's role as the economic driver of the city. We, that was a big topic in getting, in the Community Engagement Act aspect, is, you know, how do we make our downtown really reflective of, of what our community is and what, what the vibe we have in our community. Expanding Urbana's arts and culture program, that was a, a big topic, too. Everybody really loves the type of events and the things that make Urbana unique, and so how can we, how can we improve upon that? And I don't mean by the, the types of things we do, but making sure we have the resources to be able to do even more good things here. Making walkability the default setting, and this is another one. That was not underlined here, but it should be, because we've been fine-tuning the definition for that, and I will let Kevin talk a little more about walkability.
Yeah, we have, and I can see, so tomorrow, we're going to Plan Commission for another study session, and we're going to be addressing this topic of walkability. I could see sort of the phrasing of this one changing, but the idea here is, so walkability just as a basic definition is just how easy it is to walk in a given area. So, we want to be explicit and say, we should be focusing on, on walking, on making Urbana more walkable in basically everything that we do. So... So going forward, we don't want to be approving projects that don't at least get us further along towards being a more walkable community. So that's the concept behind this. So it might take a little bit of fine-tuning, but that's essentially the role, you know? We're not going to take your cars away. So, yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad you added that. We kind of snicker when we say that, but I think that was an impression some people had, that if you do this, then you're eliminating this. And that's not the case. It's really just making everybody have the opportunity to be able to walk if they want to walk, and trying to make that safe and enjoyable. Promoting incremental development. I'm going to let Kevin do this again. He's on the spot tomorrow night at Plan Commission for this one, too.
Okay, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say that I'm typically sort of anti, I'm pro using regular terms, and I'm anti-jargon. I don't like throwing out new terms because they're the, you know, I like to be able to talk with folks without, you know, sounding like I'm some sort of professional planner who only talks in jargon terms. But there are certain concepts we're trying to introduce with this plan. So we're, you know, gently introducing people to those concepts for walkability and then for incremental development. We're working on some sort of like one-page callouts to sort of explain these concepts to people. But incremental development is essentially promoting how things used to develop, you know, back in the day where it's, you know, you make, there's a lot of small development that happens. There's gradual change throughout the city, and that's really how you sort of build a community as well. That's how you build up a tax base. It's kind of slow, it's small, but it's spread throughout the city versus what we've kind of seen over the past, I don't know, 70, 80 years, which is much larger developments that really kind of are, transform a neighborhood. So taking a whole half-city block or a whole city block and putting up one giant building. That's kind of the way things have been done. We want to promote sort of the way that things used to be done, which is gradual, so that it doesn't really ruin the neighborhood, per se. So that's the concept there.
Stay tuned tomorrow night at Plan Commission, if you want to get in-depth there with that one. Investing in infrastructure that makes sense financially and environmentally resilient. You hear a lot about environmentally resiliency, but we also wanted to make sure that we added finance to that as well. So looking at projects from both of those lenses, and by infrastructure, maybe we should even explain that a little bit. It's not just roads, but, you know, all the, I guess, the underpinnings of what makes our city, everything from, you know, sidewalks, roads, sewers, all of that. And when we mentioned about developing and staying within our borders, you know, we want to go where we already have those city resources so that projects make sense, more sense financially, that we're not adding more burden onto our city by developing in areas where we don't have those existing resources.
And I'll just take this time to point out, because it's just something that I've, having recently revisited Examine Urbana, which I'll pitch again as a great resource, you can really see, if you look through and you read Examine Urbana, you can see how all of the content of the plan really came pretty directly out of there. So these, you know, these ideas of walkability, even expanding the arts and culture program, the, yeah, this last one about infrastructure and developing within our borders, our existing borders, all of that, you can find the logical underpinnings for within Examine Urbana.
Thank you. Increasing Urbana's economic vibrancy, you know, everybody talks about, hey, we need, everybody wants to lower their taxes. One of the ways to do that is get more revenue into our city. So increasing our economic vibrancy, trying to get new revenue sources into our community is very important. Encouraging and supporting community health, safety, and well-being. Kevin mentioned earlier about, you know, our plan's not going to be just used by planners. It's going to be used by other members of city staff. This particular move involves our police department, our fire department, various other departments in the city. And the metrics that we're going to be using to measure those really span all of those different departments. And so, again, we're making our comprehensive plan even more encompassing. And then advancing a healthy, clean, and green community. We stayed away from the word sustainability, because it means so many different things to different people. So we're, again, like Kevin talked about, trying to get out of the jargon and really get to the basics of what that means. Sustainability can mean, yes, our community's going to be here in 20 or 30 years, or it can mean in terms of environmental. And so that's why we're staying away from some of those jargon terms and really talking about what it is, that we want to live someplace that's clean, it's environmentally friendly, and it's going to result in a healthy community. So each one of these big moves, as I said, has little moves associated with it that are pretty specific. So encourage you to look online and see that. And again, if you want a PDF, we can provide that as well. So the next thing we'd like to talk about are the maps, and Kevin's going to go into detail and show you some of the maps that are involved in the master map.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll go through this kind of briefly, but sort of the bread and butter aspect of comprehensive plans is typically a future land use map. And so we have, our idea is to sort of take the future land use map and turn it into something that's a really usable tool. So it's not just going to have future land use on it, it'll have future road and bike and walking connections, and also some sort of priority areas to focus our future planning on. But, so right now, we've got, this is sort of a version you can go on the website and comment on, but you'll see, so the different colors correspond to different future land uses. Let's see, can I get that? Oh, yeah. Okay, so there's the legend over here. But if you just click on an area, you can also get it, too. So up here at the Landscape Recycling Center, we've got that labeled "Future Land Use Institutional." It's owned by the city. That's not going to change anytime soon. You know, our downtown area is a future land use that we're calling our Mixed Use Core. That's kind of a jargony term. Maybe we'll change the name of it. We'll see. But then you'll see a lot, a lot of the areas are just, you know, if you click over in West Urbana, it's, we've just called it a residential neighborhood. That's the vast majority of the land here. So you can just go around, you can click on the, click on the map, see what the future land use is for different areas. Again, we'll, right now, you can, you can make comments on here by clicking on this little comment box up here. There's just sort of three types of comments you can make, transportation, general, or a future development. So you can kind of click on that, draw your little area, and make a comment, and that'll get saved on here. So it's kind of, I kind of want to see what somebody said down here. So if I click on that, somebody wants us to keep this space. So this is on Florida Avenue, this is Orchard Downs is right there. So it's owned by the university, so we don't have any say over it. But this person wants to keep the space undeveloped and says some more things, which, okay. And then there's another comment here somewhere. This area would be better with some housing. So there you go, point, counterpoint. Don't develop it, do develop it. We staff will have to figure out what to do with all of these comments.
And you'll notice on the comments, those are seen by staff, and you don't, there's not names that you can see, there's no names attached to those. So people can hopefully be free in making comments and, you know, not be afraid of any sort of retaliation, that they're, you know, being honest with their comments and not afraid to say what they, say what they really think. So. And the online, and we, so you can see the map separately, you can make comments. And when you go to the online version, you can make comments by category. So you can look at a, you know, specific big move and say, you know, something about that, or add to it, or say, "I think you also should add this." Again, this is a draft, and we really want to get feedback and to make the plan better and make sure that we've included everything that, you know, our constituents want to see in the plan. So we've talked specifically about this plan, but we also want to recognize that there are many plans that the city has, and that they've already been adopted, have been approved. And Kevin's probably got a list of about a dozen of those plans, but Imagine Urbana is building on those plans, and some of them are from the city and some have been, or for some of our community partners. And, Kevin, if you want to just expand on and add a little bit?
Well, one reason we wanted to bring this up is that, so the city has our Historic Preservation Plan, but that's even older than our current comprehensive plan. So that Historic Preservation Plan is sort of one of these ancillary plans that, I guess, informs our existing comprehensive plan. And we can, you know, we can carry that over and give it the same role going forward. That's a dated plan. I don't know if we would want to update that at some point in the future, but we just wanted to kind of call that out as, you know, it's one of these other plans that sort of is a companion piece to our comprehensive plan. But our comprehensive plan is not going to go in into the depth that Historic Preservation Plan or other sort of strategic plans would go into.
So just the rollout, I'll just briefly, I mentioned the postcards earlier. Hopefully you got one of those neon postcards in the mail. The main reason for that was to tell people how to find the plan online, as well as the community meetings. We had six community meetings, and those just wrapped up here, just at the last part of September. So, and we had the release that went out. All our commissions should have received that. We sent that to the media, city staff, neighborhood groups. We have a pretty extensive list because of our community engagement over the past couple of years, that we have neighborhood contacts that we send that to so that they can distribute it in their, in their immediate neighborhood. And then just other stakeholders along the way. Just wanted to make sure people knew that, hey, we heard all of this, we now have something on paper for you to look at. So we also did advertising in Smile Politely. You know, this day and age, you don't know where people are getting their news from. It's from a variety of sources. So we were on social media. In fact, Smile Politely did an editorial that if you hadn't had the chance to look at it, we've, I got a link that I could send to Marcus so that you could, you could read that. We also did print advertising in the news gazette. We did their digital version as well. We even did a headline sponsorship, got some good feedback from that. And then flyers, you know, just the basics, you know, printing out flyers that we could give to neighborhood groups if they wanted to distribute those, either through a PDF or actual the physical flyers. Same thing with council. So the community discussions, we had six of those. They were very informal. They were meant for, hey, you can just pop in at any time during that, ask us questions. We had boards, you saw the three boards when you came in, with the vision and values, the big moves and little moves. And we also had maps available where people could actually see the physical map and make comments on it. So we held those throughout the city, hoping that people would have one that was either close to home, close to work, whatever was convenient for them, at different times of the day. We had a lunch meeting, we had evening meetings, you know, just any time that we felt like, you know, people would have an option to attend. So the timeline is very tentative. Some of these things are more exact, like the informal meetings, those have already happened. We've been making presentations to all the commissions. In fact, the Historic Preservation Commission is the last one of the commissions. So you're getting the new and improved version as it went along. So if it's not up to par, well, that's too bad for us, because you're the fifth one, I think, that we've been through. But the Plan Commission is continuing to review. They had a study session on August 22nd, and eventually it'll become like any case that the Plan Commission would need to approve, but we're not there yet. We're going through additional study sessions at every one of the Plan Commission meetings, because they're the body that has to recommend it to city council. It's under their purview to recommend. So eventually, they'll make a recommendation to the City Council Committee of the Whole. Committee of the Whole may want to study it as well. They may want to, you know, have a couple of meetings, but eventually it'll go to city council. This is probably the most, the quickest timeframe that that could happen. But our idea is, we still think we can make that happen by year end, which is our ultimate goal. And so that's, in a nutshell, just a quick overview of the plan. And again, encourage you, if you haven't, to please go online, make your comments. We'd love to, love to see your feedback. The commissions are very important part of the city's operations, and your opinions are very much valued, and we'd love to have you be hands-on in this process. And we're here to answer any questions, or if you want to give us feedback now, we are great note-takers.
Well, thank.
Sorry. Just real quick, and then.
Yeah, yeah.
Andrea and Kevin, thank you so much for the presentation. Just a few items I wanted to ask. We, I think we are interested if we could have a copy of the PDF, because we didn't get that in advance, but there, I noticed there were several links on there that I would love to be able to look into. I was able to navigate to both the Examine Urbana website and where this Imagine Urbana draft is located. But I did want to mention, though, I did double-check while you're presenting. And as a commission, I did not receive any correspondence on this in advance or around August 20th. I did receive as a resident of Urbana back in June, and actually multiple times before that, as you mentioned, throughout 2020, where I was able to interact or go to some of these different community events that happened throughout the process, which I was greatly appreciative of. But as a commissioner, this is the first that I'm learning that I really should be looking at this in more depth to add comments if warranted, which I will do, and I invite everyone here to do so. But if there's a way that we can be added as a commission, make sure that we're included on any other correspondence, we will, you know, definitely heed this request much sooner than.
Yeah, and I apologize that it did not get out to your commission, and we will look into that to make sure that our distribution lists are up to date.
Thank you.
Apologize for that happening, and that we're just now hearing about that.
It's totally okay, it happens. But we know how to get there now, and I thank you so much for your time here. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, following up, thank you for all the work that you've put into this. And I had a question, but I want to preface it by saying, I'm glad to hear about, like, what you've learned from the 2005 plan in terms of getting it connected to zoning, because I remember discussions along the way about that. So it's really nice to just see that we are, in a way, reinventing a wheel each time we do this. I also want to call out how phenomenal Lily Wilcock is as both just a source of information and who, as a representative of the work you're doing, but also as a generator of knowledge, just approaches it with such dexterity and depth and congeniality that it was really a delight to talk with her and to learn about and look through things with her. My question, well, actually, one more thing. The big ideas have some great ideas, like connected neighborhoods. So not distinctive neighborhoods, but connected neighborhoods. And that's the interstices, is, you know, where the action is and where the interest is. And then there's the list of the 11 big moves. So the question is, are the big moves actually hierarchical? Like, is that list of 1 through 11 a list of, like, the most important is this and...
Not at all.
Okay.
Yeah, they're just numbered. In fact, maybe we should have done them alphabetically or something, but yeah, they're in no particular order. And thank you so much for bringing that out, because that's something that we take for granted, that we know, but yes, from the public, it is not a hierarchy of big moves. So thank you for mentioning that.
Sure, there's a way to think of them in terms of scale, like what that involves. But I was just really happy to see, for example, the Urbana Arts and Culture Programming prioritized in that, because that's something that doesn't have to exist, and it started in kind of a small way. But it's really phenomenal to see everything that constellates from that activating the city. I mean, a parking lot can become a really spectacular venue, as happened this past weekend.
And again, that came from the public. I mean, that came from the engagement. Arts and culture is very important to the people that live here and visit here. They told us that, that they enjoy that, and that's what really... They, they told us that, that they enjoy that and that's what really sets Urbana apart from other communities is, is that vibe that's created by our arts and culture group. So it's an important part of our city.
So, and then one corollary question is, I believe you said that the little moves are just, sorry, I've got some allergies and congestion, so I sound like.
It's that time of the year.
Peter Brady in that great TV episode. So it's time for change.
Yep, that's a good song.
So I believe you said that the little moves are outlined somewhere, but I wasn't able to find those.
Well, they're all in the online version. So each, each big move is, is covered separately and all the little moves are detailed underneath that. And then it's followed by metrics. So it's a separate, each one of those is a separate chapter.
All right, I'll look at that because I'm really excited to see what.
But we'll make sure you get the PDF too, because sometimes it just helps to see something physical in front of you. And, and then if you have comments, you can jot them down and then go online and make your comments. So thank you, we'll make sure you get that.
Well, I think I have a stack of them on my desk, so while Marcus is giving his.
And actually, I've got them back there on the front, the table back here too.
There's some back there too, so if anybody's interested.
I think there might be four, Marcus, if you wanted to pass them, yeah. And if not, mine are upstairs on my desk as well. We'll give you a hard copy before you leave.
I'm new and so my, my goal tonight was actually to listen, but I do have like one comment, which I cannot resist, which is I do feel like it's very important to update the historic preservation plan because many of your big moves are directly related to historic preservation. And the language that we use surrounding historic preservation has changed a lot since that plan was made. So issues of cultural and environmental resiliency are embedded in historic preservation practices now and the way we think about adaptive reuse. And the greenest building that we make is the one we already have. And reinvestment in existing infrastructure, it is all right in line with historic preservation practices today in a way that a plan that's dated probably doesn't really call out. So there's a real opportunity to see the alignment between historic preservation, adaptive reuse and kind of contemporary ways of thinking about it. And it supports cultural resiliency, Urbana Arts and Culture, storytelling about place in ways that will amplify all of those goals and like plug in in multiple ways. So I really, really, really recommend thinking of that.
I just love hearing that, that yes, there's so many different themes that are woven in throughout all of these. And for you to say that you see historical preservation within all those areas is very meaningful. So appreciate that.
And that just reminds me, I'm, I'm gonna just take, since I have the mic in front of me.
Watch out.
I think one of, one of the, the best things that we've done since I've been here, and I've been here for 10 years, is making zoning changes to our R7 university residential district, which essentially that's got all of the old Greek houses in it. And it was kind of set up where you could only have a fraternity, a fraternity, a sorority or a dorm. And that's all well and good when those are uses that people want to use a building for, but we're seeing a lot of those buildings just kind of get vacant. So anyway, long story short, we made changes and we said, if you're not changing the exterior of the building, you can do a lot more residential uses, even along Lincoln Avenue, you could do some business uses. So since then, I think we've seen, I think just one old Greek house get turned into an apartment building, but it's, I mean, that is a big win and so I'm very proud of that. So that's all I have to say.
I second the nomination that, yeah, it was really, really exciting. It was an exciting conversation to have. And I want to also concur with Kate that we really do need to update that plan. I mean, the work that you've been doing on this is lights a fire under this commission to say, you know, you need to get that updated to draw on our collective expertise to make that happen. Because otherwise it's sort of, you know, dragging along like a can behind, you know, a car of newlyweds or something. And that's not, not right.
Great points.
Thank you very much. This is really informative. Okay, so at the beginning of your presentation, there, there are the big ideas, the big moves and the little moves. Kevin, I think, did, did you mention that the big moves and the little moves were more in line with like strategic plans or where, am I making that up or?
I mentioned strategic plans at some point, but.
And I, and I mentioned them being strategies. Maybe that's that, where the confusion came in.
Okay. Yeah, I just was asking for clarification because.
Just, just picking out one, let me just, I'll quickly maybe tell you some big moves. Which big move most interests you?
Well, any, any one. It was just more of a structural question as opposed to a specific move. Because I was looking at the, the diagram, how a comprehensive plan relates to other plans. And the comprehensive plan is the, the light blue circle and the neighborhood plans is the, the ellipse. And then there's other city plans. And so just, just in terms of other city plans, I, I know there's a lot of, there's the pedestrian one, the bicycle one and, and, you know, neighborhood plan. The other city plans, it, it may be instructive to just detail the other city plans in, in terms of, you know, I, I, that's, I just noticed that.
Yeah, no, and that's, that's a good point. And that's, other, other folks have pointed that out to us as well. And we, that's something we just need to get together as staff and discuss. Well, the big thing we need to discuss is which of our current plans that are part of the comprehensive plan do we want to carry over? So I think we'll most, most certainly want to bring over the bicycle and pedestrian master plan and the, did I just say bicycle and pedestrian? Both of those plans.
And some of those are pretty recent too.
Yeah, but there's, there's some plans that probably don't make sense to carry over, but we, we have yet to, to have that working session as staff.
Okay. Yeah, it was, it was just kind of a nebulous area.
To answer your question on, you know, the little moves, I'll just give you some examples. And I chose make walkability the default setting since Kevin went into that one in a little more detail. But the little moves that are associated with that, and again, they're not in hierarchy order. So I need to, that's another thing that we need to talk about, even these little moves. We need to make sure people know that, you know, it's not that we prioritize one over the other. But continue to implement the 2020 pedestrian master plan and the 2016 bicycle master plan. So that's one little move. Identify development regulations that do not support walkability and change them where appropriate. Use Walkable City Rules, and that's an underline, it's actually a, a book.
Yeah, it's a really good resource.
Definitely a, a planning resource. As a guide to make Urbana more walkable. Work with the community to identify personal and physical safety concerns that deter people from walking and develop measures to address them. Prioritize staff time to focus on making streets and parking lots safer for people walking and biking. Extend the Kikapu Rail Trail through downtown Urbana. Develop, develop policies for traffic calming and expand the investment of federal funding for public infrastructure in targeted low-income neighborhoods. And that's just part of the list. But, so they're very specific actions that are measurable and trackable to make sure that we're making that overall big move happen. Just, is that, explain it better?
It does, yes.
Just talking out loud, that's how we should write that. So that, that, those are the things that we're learning from this group is that, you know, we're, we're very close to this. We've, you know, drafted it, we've redrafted and writing and then, but to hear comments from the public that, oh, wow, you know, that's, that could be misinterpreted or just, we're not saying it correctly. So very helpful.
I guess I would throw in there that as you mentioned that big moves don't necessarily track under any one given big idea. A big move could help multiple big ideas. It might help one idea more than another, but also the little moves could implement big ideas or big moves more than one. So looking at public safety issues helps walkability, but it also helps safety or transportation or economy. So the giant 52 dimensional Venn diagram might be helpful, but I think we have.
Marcus, were you inside my brain earlier today? Because I was thinking about the same thing. Like we need a network diagram that kind of ties a lot of these together because they're not really siloed.
Some people, I, myself included, visuals are certainly a better way sometimes to, to explain things. But Marcus, thank you for bringing up about how they, how some of them overlap. But at the end of each one of those sections on the big move and little moves, we talk about the associated big ideas. So for instance, what we just talked about, whereas making walkability the default setting, the three big ideas that are reached there is Urbana is a place for everyone, Urbana is both financially and environmentally resilient, and Urbana is a city of connected neighborhoods. So this one big move addresses three of our big, big goals for the community. Then we also say who's going to be the project lead on each one of these big moves. And the project leads are here within the city, it's, it's staff. And then who are the implementation partners? So we need other, other bodies, sometimes within the city, sometimes outside of the city, it's community partners. For instance, on this one, it's everything from Norfolk Southern Railway to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Park District. You know, these are partners that are going to help us in making these things come to a reality. So we've, we've actually hopefully made it, it's, everybody's pretty accountable, you know, these are the people who are responsible and this is how it's going to happen. So we're trying to make it, again, learning lessons from the 2005 plan. When you look at that assessment document, there's an executive summary and you can see quickly what are the things that, the lessons that were learned. And, and one of them was if you can't have them, if you don't have tracking mechanisms in place or measurable, just measurable goals, that they're not going to happen. And so we've tried to be real explicit about how we can make each of those big moves a reality. And if we haven't, tell us.
This is amazing. So Angela can see when I have my thumb near the button, which means there's something I'm thinking about.
Psychic.
And so she just prompts me. It's incredible. I, I really like this and now I see, I'm so glad I somehow wasn't seeing the little, the little moves before. I, I think that like this one example, make walkability the default setting also encovers big idea number four, Urbana embraces its cultural vibrancy and character. Because I don't have spontaneous conversations with neighbors from when I'm driving a car and isolated in this box going at a certain speed. And so I actually, you know, recalling in the pandemic, how more people went out for walks. And I, I went outside in order to, you know, get some recreation, something I normally do to be alone. And, and I hesitated to go outside because it was so damn social out there during the pandemic. Strangers saying hello. But that is an aspect, the walk, the walkable aspect of our community is, I think, a huge part of its cultural vibrancy and character.
Very good perspective.
So again, thank you. And I, I hear that the onus is on us now. We have some, some homework to review this, this draft plan, which we will do, keeping an eye, as Kate had mentioned, to the, the linkage to the HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission. And then on that though, I think there's, as also brought up by you, Kate, there's another really a responsibility on our shoulders, and we brought it up last month as well and in previous meetings. We know that there's this very old plan for, for historic preservation. And so instead of just bringing it up every meeting, I'd like to propose maybe if we could add it to a study session actually next month and have a, a deeper conversation about it so we can make some movement on it and, and have a better sense of how we want to move forward, what really needs to be updated. And perhaps if we plan that now, we can, we have two homework assignments, Imagine Urbana being the priority, but also if we could take the time to, to review our, our plan, our historic preservation plan, to just really see those linkages and what absolutely needs to be updated, that could really help us make some forward movement quicker. So, thank you both so much.
All right, thanks for having us.
Yeah. Again, thank you and look forward to comments that you are able to provide us. I know it's a, a lot to ask for, you know, our commissioners, you have a lot on your plate, but we certainly appreciate the time you take to, to help us out. Thank you.
I'll work with Kevin and Andrea and put together a packet or an online link for all of the documents. And then I can also put together an email directing you to those. And that will also then be an opportunity for me to communicate with our other HPC members that aren't here tonight so they can be apprised, you know, they can watch the video or see the presentation, but then they can go on to the plan and make comments and stuff.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, my turn. Actually, I don't have a video presentation, so I can just do it from here. So in your packet, you should have my staff report. Items of interest, former HPC chair and founding member Alice Novak received the distinguished service award for her service to the city of Urbana to planning students and new planning, practicing planners. She got that last week at the APA Illinois conference. It was really neat. They kept it a secret from her until that night and we had a really great time and people, you know, gave good comments about her and, and it was really touching. There were several planners there that have been working with her for years, that were students of hers, community members, and it was really great. So. HPC bylaws, staff are working with the city attorney on proposed revisions. So we made suggested changes to those and we need to get the, the attorney's opinion on them. He's a new staff attorney. He's been on staff for a couple of months now. So we have to kind of get in the queue because I'm sure there's a little backlog of legal In and amongst that call for revisions to bylaws, we have, I think, five or six boards or commissions that are different kinds, quasi judicial and advisory and voting, and they all have different levels of authority based on state legislation. So we can't necessarily make them identical bylaws, but we can certainly try and make them a little more similar. For example, I think we've learned that zoning board of appeals members have five-year terms and I think everybody else is either two or three-year terms. And like we had no idea and we don't know why. So, and some bylaws have attendance policies and other bylaws don't. And in my opinion, there's no reason that every single board or commission shouldn't have language about, hey, you need to show up to the thing that you said you would show up to. So that's where that stands and hopefully we'll have a little more information. When we do have a draft to give you, you will be presented that draft to cogitate on for a month and then we vote on it the following month. So you'll have plenty of time to discuss it. I'm gonna, so the CLG grant opportunity, John Presley did just send out an email, I think today or yesterday, saying that the cycle had been opened and it was going to run from October 1st to November 15th. So we've got five weeks, five and a half weeks to submit applications. It's an online application. I'm not sure how much of the application you can see to know what to prepare before you go to apply for it. But he did say it would follow the similar format to the 2022 version. I did share a Google Drive folder, I think last week, but when I went into it today, I noticed that I hadn't put any documents in it. There are documents in there now to show what is essentially on the SHIPO website about the application and budget and timeline. And I provided a, an example budget from our 2004 Staco. And I, um, provided a, an example budget from our 2004 Staco workshop to figure out, you know, here's what we did back then. I think it's not going to be very difficult. Um, I think if we can come up with a budget of how much something's going to cost and a general timeline of when things are going to be done, you know, if it's a workshop, when it's going to be, how, when it's going to be planned, um, who's going to do the planning, um, hours that are going to be spent, um, people's time can be billed. It could also be used as a matching, and I think it's a 70/30, uh, match, state versus city. People's time can be used as in-kind match. And so I'm thinking, you know, if you know of consultants that would be interested in doing a project, if you know, um, organizations or classes, um, that would like to do something, if folks, and so that's the budget aspect of it. I think you have through the end of 2025 to complete the project. So even if you wanted to, if, if say you knew, okay, next semester, I've got a class and we want to do this thing, or I'm going to work with somebody at my agency to do a thing and we want to do a workshop, we'll do it then. If we can come up with the budget now in the next five and a half weeks to submit with an application, that's doable. And there is no limit to the number of applications we can submit. When I looked at the application for a range of money, uh, in 2022, there was a little over $140,000 for the entire state. And the range of money you could ask for was up to $140,000. So that's basically saying first come, first served, winner take all. If you only need $5,000, great. If you want to do a huge thing and nobody else submitted a project, you could potentially get it all. Ideas that we've already discussed include the Royer district work. You know, that could be something as simple as a brochure design. It could be, um, a slate of signs to either replace or make new. I did note, for example, um, the Hotel Royer sign on Race Street looked like the vinyl front was peeling off. Depending on how they're made, it's possible that a replacement sign could simply be the new decal. But that's kind of a little bit of research that would need to be done with the manufacturer of the sign. And they could be like, yeah, no, you won't be able to replace just the decal. You need to replace the whole sign. So, uh, could also be, um, Brian Adams suggested adding some extra buildings to the brochure, which could also then be turned into more signs at those new locations. I briefly toyed with the idea of there being a Royer historic district. But by definition, the zoning ordinance, a historic district is a contiguous zone. So we do have a Royer district, but it's the two-house assemblage down where his house and the mother-in-law, Adelaide, whomever cottage in the back is. But it's possible that if, you know, you wanted to do other signage to celebrate those, to mark them, you know, the, the, the world is your oyster. You can come up with lots of different things. Another project idea was replacing the now defunct historic preservation website. If there's a class or a student that wants to work on that, you could apply for a grant for that. A landmark district owner education program is something that I've been thinking about for the last seven years. We have a historic preservation brochure, but it's outdated. But, and in addition to a brochure, we need to design, I need to design a program where we contact the actual landmark property owners and say, welcome to the program. Here are the benefits of it. Here are the, the challenges of it. You might not have even known that you lived in a landmark. Here's what the responsibilities are. And then also using that as the foundation for an education program to get more people to be interested in landmarking their project. Another aspect could be taking that educational program to realtors, who I am told often see historic designation as an obstacle and barrier rather than something to be celebrated. So that's a thing. And then, you know, annual reminder notices, um, rather than being seen as an enforcement thing, doing it during preservation month, welcoming people, reminding people that they live in a historic property and inviting them to participate in, in projects. Downtown district, we have a national register downtown district. We could design banner signage or freestanding signage. I've got examples. I went back to Bowling Green, Ohio, where I spent 10 years and they've just done some amazing things and we could talk about that more. We have a historic resource inventory, but it really hasn't been updated in a long time. We've had contributions by Alice Novak's classes. We also had city planning staff do it decades ago. We've had some from PACA. So a grant could be written to compensate people for doing those surveys if they meet the requirements for those surveys. That would then allow us to update our demolition delay list, which is the thing that increases the timeframe for somebody to be able to respond to a building demolition notice, which is normally 10 days. But if you're on the demolition delay list, you have 45 days before you can get that demolition permit, which then allows, uh, an interested party to nominate a property to be a landmark and can be used as a tool to save historic properties. So if we don't update the demolition delay list with additional surveys, we don't actually stay static. We actually lose every year because some of those buildings fall apart because they just die. But we're also not adding newly eligible properties to the list because every year more buildings become eligible to be historic properties. But we haven't updated the demolition delay list since I think it was created back in 2011, 2012, in response to unwanted demolitions of historic properties. And then finally, updating the original and unamended 1998 preservation plan. So these are things. It's not an exhaustive list. I would love to talk to people one-on-one or in groups. Again, really the deadline is, a grant application needs to be turned in by November 15th. So if you've got ideas, we can talk about them now. You can talk to me about them, you know, individually. I can talk to up to two members at a time if you want to do things in groups. And you can also include other people that aren't on the commission in your project.
Yeah, Marcus, we absolutely want to pursue several of these items, I believe. And as we discussed last month, you know, a member that is not here at the moment, Dennis Roberts, um, I know is also communicated that he's interested particularly in that first item that's listed regarding, um, you know, updating brochures and signage. Yeah, so also a few of these other ones that you mentioned here. So, um, absolutely, yes, want to be involved, want to meet, um, and, and hitting this deadline of November 15th for sure.
Any suggestions on, on how to, um, proceed next? You know, trying to stay in compliance with the Open Meetings Act? I mean, we could set up and advertise some pre-planned meetings if you all want to set up some evening things or daytime things? Or we could simply try and limit it to, you know, two commission members working, you know, maximum on any given thing?
I guess let's, let's hear from others to see what, what you're interested in doing.
Yes, I feel like one potentially effective way of grouping several of these initiatives together is to, um, think about funding an intern to work in the office so that there's someone working full-time, like a student working full-time during the summer, who if this list is prioritized in some way, um, can then take some of this stuff on and be in the office and reporting.
Okay.
And have city resources, like the, be directly plugged into the city rather than working outside of it.
Okay.
Uh, it just feels like one model to like, say, okay, if we want to, um, cover the website, creating some education program materials, like just put someone on it full-time for the summer. Just a possibility.
I like that idea. And I, I was thinking also about how, rather than making a proposal for one of these or the other, that if we could group them, um, uh, not in terms of like an analog digital divide, like a website versus signage, but just, um, you know, getting more information, like prioritizing information, or even then the, um, the kinds of things you were seeing in Ohio, the banners and all. They, they can be great. But, um, if somebody could like, if we could think of this as a suite of things that are all grouped under this one target of, of kind of activating information, um, that would be kind of great. I am curious to know with the preservation plan, I mean, clearly that's something we need to update, but what would the, what would we ask for in terms of funding in doing that? Would it, uh, yeah?
So the first thing to me that comes to mind is either, you know, hiring a consultant to review it. And like, you know, we could have hired a consultant to do the comprehensive plan. We chose to do it in-house. There are, uh, consultants that do historic preservation plans. Another idea that comes to mind is, um, you know, Kevin and Andrea are working with one of the planning classes on a specific chunk of the comprehensive plan. And they're providing information. I worked with, um, a landscape architecture visiting scholars, um, LA class, and they provided different options for projects for Boneyard Creek. So if a historic preservation class or some other sort of anthropology class wanted to do a historic preservation plan update for the City of Urbana, where they, you know, reviewed the existing plan, talked to HPC members, city council, organizations, and said, what would, what should we be doing now in the 21st century? And then propose a draft plan and through the period they're working on it, be reporting back to HPC and getting feedback and input meanwhile, um, you know, interviewing staff somewhat like they did with the comprehensive plan. That's a potential thing as well.
Thank you.
And I would be open to completely other ideas for updating the preservation plan.
Just going, uh, quickly backing up to getting whether we need a public, you know, notice of a meeting or, or working in pairs. I think just my own input would be, uh, before we could find a date even to get everyone together, you know, that deadline's, it's not going to happen. So, um, but I'm, I'm not, anyway, so my point would be that maybe working in pairs provides a more flexible framework, given there's five weeks and maybe you could serve as more of a clearinghouse.
Absolutely.
I think that would be a more flexible strategy.
And I'll also throw out there that these are regularly recurring grants. They happen at least once a year. I think there have been times where they've even had two cycles, like there was a September cycle and a February cycle. So it's possible that it might just take more than five weeks to come up with a budget for a thing, especially like banner and signage design estimates. So maybe it's, the group starts working on it and it's not ready for this year's cycle, but then it's ready for February's cycle. Y'all are on here for years of terms, so you're going to have more, more time to, to crack at this. Terry, to announce an open meeting, does it need to be a legal notice in the paper? Does it just need to be posted like with the media and on the hallway thing?
No, it has to be posted at the city building and it has to be posted on the web. I'm not sure. Some things require a legal ad and some things don't. Depends on where it falls on the agenda.
Okay. Well, if it was simply a, a, a working group, I guess it would be a special meeting of the HPC for the purposes of, of working on, on projects. But if y'all can do it with two people at a time, maybe that's just more complicated than it needs to be.
It, it could be as simple as calling in a workshop, like a CLG planning workshop and then, um, notifying the, or meeting the proper notifications.
Yeah. So it could be very quick to post a meeting day and say, you know, we're going to meet next Wednesday or next Thursday and we post it out there and we post it on the website and, and it's done.
How much lead time is that required?
Forty-eight hours or 24 hours.
I'd have to check. Because again, it, it depends on what you do. If it's like a workshop thing, I don't know that it would require, it would not require a legal ad if I remember correctly. The only thing that would cause it to be 15 days is if you have to do a legal ad.
And the legal ads are...
Those have to be posted in the paper 15 days before the, is it 10 or 15 days before?
15 days. But that's typically, I think in the zoning ordinance, legal ads are for things like landmarks and, and district nominations.
Yeah, it's more of a public hearing.
Right, for public hearings.
I mean, we have to be able to get together to work on things.
Right.
You know, other, yeah, so, yeah, we'll figure that out.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions on that bit of my staff report? Come up, come up to the mic and state your name and speak your piece.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, you're welcome.
Okay, I'm Phyllis Williams and I'm a volunteer with PACA. And if this is the only opportunity we have for input on these CLG grants, then I want you to consider doing the brochure that's been on your back burner for a long time and we offered to help with about four years ago. And that was, you know, encouraging people to buy historic homes in Urbana. And what you can do, that you really have more freedom than most people think. And since you still have two boxes of Royer brochures, maybe that's what waits till the next cycle. And because the Royer overlay district, and that's the way we think about it, it does need to be expanded. I mean, even to Lille Park to include the gazebo up there because that's a Royer. But to me, this has economic implications and we've really put this off too long.
That's the homeowner education.
We need to advertise ourselves. And we'd love to help still.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you. And you said your name was Phyllis?
Phyllis.
Phyllis Williams. Thank you, Phyllis.
So then the last item is preservation month activities. And again, uh, next May 31st, the mid-century modern housing tour, um, helping being organized by our own HPC member, Kate Holliday. Uh, so if you want to offer any details on that or update status things?
Sure. I, um, can say that, that the format of the tour is there'll be four open houses. So you can go through those, uh, three of those houses, um, are agreed upon. Um, the Erlinger House, um, the Jack Baker Lofton Studio in downtown Champaign, um, and the Beer House by John Breplinger. Um, the fourth house is still a little, little up in the air at this point, so I will not target, um, what, what those possibilities for the fourth house are. Um, but in conjunction with the open house, there will be, um, a symposium in the morning about historic preservation and mid-century modernism. Um, and, and in the afternoon of that Saturday, the, there'll be the open houses. And we are working also to create a driving tour of Urbana and Champaign and neighborhoods that have high concentrations of interesting mid-century modern housing. that have high concentrations of interesting mid-century modern housing. Um, as well as, um, thinking more broadly about, um, uh, the building of housing in Urbana-Champaign from the 50s through the 80s um, and where it's built and what kinds of housing is built in that time period. We will be looking for volunteers for sure to help with the open houses. Um, and to help shepherd people through and to keep people out of the parts of houses that people don't want them in. So we will need plenty of volunteers.
And I just wanna ask, and the date of May 31st is the date that's been set?
Yeah, May 31st. And it was, there, there are a lot of conversations about what the best possible time was um, and a lot of different, um, uh, priorities. Uh, so we made it into the month of May, but only on the very last day. And, and the tours will be run, registration will be run through the Champaign County History Museum. Um, and so they'll be sending out information about registration.
And is this associated with the semester-long exhibit that's going on at, is it Cranor Art Museum?
Yes, correct. And David Hayes and I are both working, um, as a part of a curatorial group. Um, there is an exhibition opening in late January 2025 at the Cranor Art Museum. Um, that is called Making Place For The Arts At Home: Mid-Century Modern Architecture And Performance. That is focused, um, in one gallery on a group of, uh, four houses that, um, were designed by faculty, um, in the School of Architecture here to promote various kinds of artistic production. And then the other room, uh, will have a much broader context that David is working on, if you wanna fill in.
That's looking at the ways that the saturation of arts through the, um, the, the Festival of Contemporary Arts program starting in the 1940s kind of cultured people into this community to finding, uh, places. Their cup was running over. You might see an exhibition of photographs from the Museum of Modern Art in a corridor at the library, for example. And then, uh, the university, as it was expanding, began buying houses and then turning them to interesting new uses. So just some images showing, um, the experimental music studio, which was in the attic story of Stiven House on, on West Nevada. Yeah, I'm seeing some nods there. And also the first Ja- the first Japan house. Um, so seeing the plans and the description of changes and how the university was negotiating um, that transition, um, uh, into a space that on the outside was a, you know, late 19th century house, but on the inside, um, was a suite of Japanese-style rooms. Um, and then the last part is focusing on how a group of people, um, formed the new verbal workshop, which was meeting in a residence. And so they were, um, inventing a new performance mode called speech music. Um, sitting on the floor between the dining room and the living room. Um, and for 12 years, this ensemble then began taking their work out into the world, the larger world. Including at the opening of the Cranor Center for the Performing Arts, one of the, they were one of the, um, groups there. So, so making, um, work there and then bringing it out. So that's the kind of background context for this really specific look at, um, of phenomenal architects and phenomenal patrons actually, um, connecting that in a much more holistic, um, way.
So are any of the three slash four houses or the driving tour of additional houses or the places featured in the exhibit, are any of them in the city of Urbana? Or is it all Champaign?
No, Airlinger House.
Okay. So I think that then maybe opens up an avenue to try and collaborate somehow with our Arts and Culture Commission, if you're not already, but at least in the very sense of helping advertise. Cause this is a cool thing that members of our HPC who have lives outside HPC are helping make and the city should be willing to help advertise it.
It really does go both communities, cause I mean, Japan House and Stiven House are in Urbana. I mean, they're, they're university properties, so they, you know, but they're, but they're West Nevada, um, street. And, and actually relates to the zoning, the whole
Right.
Kind of opportunistic way of thinking about what.
So I, I could see, you know, a press release, working with Bridgette Boyhan, talking about the things and then saying, I'm part of these facilities that are being, you know, showcased are in the city of Urbana. That's why you're hearing it from city staff.
There's also, what, the content of the exhibit also includes a large map of Urbana-Champaign with neighborhoods from, from both, um, cities. And the driving tour will include not just Airlinger House, like Airlinger House is an open, one of the four open houses, but the driving tour will include, um, parts of South Urbana and some of the properties that are from the older mid-century modern home tour that was done in 2012.
Yes.
Is that correct? So that will inform part of the, the driving tour. So there's, there's plenty of Urbana.
And, and we've got like seven, eight months to try and get the battleship that is the city turned around to help advertise everything.
But the exhibit is earlier than May.
The exhibit opens in the end of January and runs through July. Thanks.
Okay. Um, and thank you for the extra information and please nudge me to do the things I say I'm gonna do.
Likewise, I'm sure.
Uh, moving on to historic property activities, uh, we've had no recent inquiries for landmarking or districts. Um, no movement on First United Methodist Church.
We are working on that right now.
Excellent. Thank you. And if there's anything we can do, holler. Uh, certificates of appropriateness in progress or review. There haven't been any changes, um, in the Buena Vista Court ones or, um, you know, progress continues at Hotel Royer. We did have a, a recent inquiry from a Buena Vista Court resident about a utility company starting to do some work there. And we made contact with them and they're gonna be submitting an application for a certificate of appropriateness. We're not sure if it's going to require it, um, or if it's gonna be exempt based on the magnitude of the work. But that's, that's what the certificate process is, figuring out what they wanna do and then determining if they need a certificate or not. I anticipate that it might simply be all underground work and whatnot. Um, you know, boxes on the side of even historic houses aren't necessarily explicitly exempt from the certificate process, but it is utility work that we have to be somewhat, you know, accepting of. And that's the end of my staff report.
Can I just jump in with one remark?
Sure.
Going back to the CLG grant, um, opportunities, this remark from, from, um, the public, from Ms. Williams, um, really resonated with me. Um, I've been thinking about this following up on our last meeting as, you know, getting information out, as I would say, under the umbrella of informing the community about things that exist. But Kate's presence here and the remarks about the, of updating the 1998 plan. Um, and then this remark and your own about your desire to, um, help homeowners know, like all the opportunities there. To me, that's a really interesting, um, pairing, um, because it's about, it's very vital and it's about moving forward. It's about taking action,
Yes.
Which is really different from information.
Hmm.
And I think that, um, uh, that, that to me feels like a really, um, strong move. Something that could be really appealing. So I'm just putting it on the table as something that, um, as a, a link that I would really get excited about.
Mm-hmm.
Updating the language, updating information. Um, I say this very cognizant and Kate experiences this more than I do, I'm sure. But, you know, when you talk about historic preservation, um, people's lack of understanding of the opportunity that that presents is, is, it's tedious
Yes.
To have to get over, but it becomes tragic
Right.
Um, when things don't happen because of that. So, so to be able to update the language itself, um, is, have huge value.
And are you, are you saying updating the language kind of metaphorically, just the conversation about it? Or are you speaking specifically to like the preservation plan or to brochures or things?
A, a, a bit of both.
Okay.
But I mean, I, but I, I'm definitely thinking about, I mean, you know, we need to assess the plan.
Yeah.
Um, but we also need to find working definitions or new terms
Yes.
That help people, um, uh, understand what we already know.
Right.
I know this from landscape architecture. I mean, I'm constantly having to share with people my working definitions of landscape architecture in order for them to understand, um, how broad and complicated and wonderful the field is. And, and people get excited about it because they think it's small and then they discover very quickly that it's big.
And if I remember correctly, you know, we started with the preservation plan in 98 and that then grew into the Historic Preservation Ordinance, which was then incorporated into the zoning ordinance. So I could see where if the concepts and the philosophies of the commission's idea about preservation in the city, you know, shifted 90 degrees or 45 degrees. And part of that is looking at your historic preservation ordinance and maybe you would focus on different things or you would change enforcement in different ways. Or you would promote other things that would then get reflected elsewhere in the zoning ordinance. You know, the adaptive reuse zoning text amendment was great. We are still left with, you know, but maybe it was an incremental step and maybe additional steps need to be done. Um, and I'll, I could go into those later in a different venue.
I think we're in, like, the expertise that's represented on our small, um, but diverse commission is, um, pretty interesting in regard to what revisiting this would mean. I mean, Kate brings incredible expertise.
Yes.
Andrew has incredible expertise, um, of a different sword that comes from all of his experience, you know, working with parks districts and
Right.
Being very engaged in community, um, here and in Champaign. Dennis obviously has a certain kind of experience.
Well, and, and, and that being said, we've got other boards and commissions. The Sustainability Advisory Commission, you know, as, as Kate said, the, the greenest building is the one you've already got built. Um, you know, would the Sustainability Advisory Commission have things to say about preserving and continuing to use old slash historic housing stock? You know, the Tree Commission and our Legacy Tree Program, um, you know, our historic properties tend to have more mature trees than others. Uh, maybe the Legacy Tree Program needs tweaked to provide a bigger benefit for keeping your mature trees than just one parking space. Oh, yeah.
I would just quickly reinforce that, that the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation just issued a big bulletin about, um, adaptive reuse being the key to affordable housing.
And, and 50-odd years ago, ecology and interest in history merged together hand in hand. Um, they were seen as inseparable because they were reactions to so many of the modernist practices that, you know, did, showed total disregard for both. Tear it down and, you know, pollute the site. So, um, the question became, where are we and how can we be, live here in a, in a better way, healthier way? So.
I'll, um, I'll put out some feelers on the NA PC list for trying to gather some information about budgets and things like that for signage or, you know, hey, did you update your historic preservation plan? Who of you has done that? What was your timeline? Just to try and get some ideas of what things cost and how long it took and who did it in-house or did they have a consultant do it, that kinda stuff.
And, and then maybe as part of that also, um, to help every, to help us understand, if you wanna have a robust mechanism through which somebody can be incentivized to buy a historic home.
Yeah.
So that it doesn't have to happen piecemeal. I mean, I've been part of conversations through people, you know, like Al, uh, sorry. Well, anyhow, people who are trying to sell a historic home to somebody who's gonna care for it. And it's like, you're kind of, um, uh, if we had a mechanism that would really support that, that just sounds terrific. I mean, Carolyn Baxley is who I'm thinking about, who, you know, had helped buy something to help save the house.
Yep.
Um, and couldn't really, I mean, you know, financially it didn't make sense for her to keep it.
Mm-hmm.
But finding somebody who would take care of it was, was great.
Right.
But then, you know, we become the kind of frontline marketers for this. Um, and if it can be presented in a way from the city itself or the community organizations, you know, here's what you can do and here all the, here's the constellation of groups that'll help you um, with that, with information, with ideas, with materials, with discounts, et cetera. That's pretty cool.
Yeah. There's a lot of things we can work on. Okay. Um, that's the end of my staff report. Uh, I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Yeah, and just a note on the staff report, I noticed, um, you did mention the extension that, um, uh, the Joseph Royer or
Right.
Sorry, Joseph Pryor regarding the Hotel Royer, um, requested from the city council. So we still don't really have like a end date yet, but we know there's an extension.
Right. And, and that was explained to me better. So the extension is no longer has a hard and fast deadline. Uh, there is simply a, um, a monthly or quarterly reduction in the reimbursement that they are going to get. So the longer they take to do it, the less their reimbursement is, from the city is going to be. And that, I, I think is, is a reimbursement of eligible expenses from sales tax that they are generating. So again, city's not gonna be out any money. They will simply be getting less money back from, I think, um, property tax or sales tax that they would have been generating themselves. So I think, again, in the end, and I guess I'm on record for this because we're televised, my goal is that the hotel get built and open. If they happen to get incentives for that, great. If they don't, okay, too. My goal is that it become a functioning property again. If it takes six months, take six months. That's just my personal
They're working.
And professional opinion.
It's hardening to see people, we know, working on it, so.
Yeah, I, I know from our, when we got to tour, uh, last, I guess it was May or June.
May, yeah.
Um, they're very eager to finish. So, yeah, I mean, we're just very hopeful. But I know that there's definitely buzzing going around. People are asking more and more, just within our community, what's going on. Um, okay, so moving on though, thank you so much for that report.
Sure.
Um, we do not have a study session this, this time.
Yes. Correct.
But let's, let's plan that for the next meeting, uh, to, to just add it to our agenda. Um, but also that, uh, workshop idea, I'll be in touch with both of you to, to see what we can do about that. And understanding if we can't get all the commissioners, but I'd like to also be able to invite the public and potentially other commissioners from other commissions who might be interested.
Right.
So if we nail a date, maybe we can get a little workforce to get moving on the CLG.
Yes. Um,
Okay.
So if I could suggest, if, if we're gonna do a study session of the preservation plan for next month, please take some time to at least skim it, make yourself familiar with it. I will reread it and, and try and be able to summarize and hit the high points. And I think my, you know, I don't expect, this is just the opening salvo and discussion. Um, I'm gonna, as I'm reviewing it, I'm gonna note shortcomings and good things. Um, you know, things that obviously need updated. Please make notes and do the same. And, you know, it's not comprehensive, but just take note of what you took the time to read and notice.
Thank you. And, and all of our plans are located on the city of Urbana's website.
Yes.
Okay. There aren't any announcements. So that really is the end of our meeting. We will now adjourn the public meeting at 8:50 PM. No business will be discussed after the meeting is adjourned. And thank you so much. No business will be discussed after the meeting is adjourned. And thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.